Okay.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting. It's 5:33. This is a public hearing for the business district for the proposed Triple Lakes Business District, so.
Just a point I did hear from the mayor, he's just a couple of minutes behind. I've not heard anything from our other trustees, but just wanted to make that note, so we'll probably see. Thank you trustee Lanner. We are here this evening for to receive public comment at this public hearing for proposal Business District related to the proposed development of Triple Lakes here in the northwest corner of the village. It is currently a unincorporated portion of the county that we are anticipating to annex. We have passed collectively a redevelopment agreement, a pre-annexation agreement, a recapture agreement to help define the terms and process through which this development will occur, the relationship between the the village and relevant infrastructure and developer. Very generally, I think it's safe to say that this is a very rare opportunity for the village to extend its boundaries for the benefit of its residents. We have very few opportunities outside of our current boundaries to expand, particularly for significant commercial opportunities. This represents large scale potential, both in population terms and in revenue terms for probably generations to come. So the idea is, again, helping us expand our boundaries for the benefit of population growth, which has all sorts of additional benefits, for revenue growth outside of property taxes. And this is an opportunity to make sure that we can continue serving our residents with the same excellent service without increasing property taxes in the short, hopefully the long term. This is also an opportunity for us to engage in our school districts. We are working hard to make sure that this provides value immediately and in the long term for for our school districts, we're working to partner with them and provide value as best we can in their terms as well. With that being said, our consultant PGAV, has anything to add to that? Adam Stroud?
Adam Stroud, good to see pretty much everybody again in this room. This is the Business District public hearing, so we are in the phase of implementing the vision set forth in the redevelopment agreement that was approved in spring. So that redevelopment agreement says that the village will take reasonable steps. Can't guarantee the decision by the village board, but that redevelopment agreement says you'll take reasonable steps to create a business district and to create a TIF district. The process of creating a business district and a TIF both have very specific noticing requirements, as well as the requirement for a public hearing. This is that public hearing for the Business District. The Business District is the sales tax component of the incentive package that's been promised to the developer. So that means that all of the goods that are taxable under your non-home rule sales tax, as well as state sales tax, it will be taxed 1% higher than what it otherwise would be. It's not a village-wide tax, it's a tax only within the boundaries of the Business District, which pretty much just incorporates the Triple Lakes development. So we have to make a finding of blight. Not every finding of blight is what you would expect, so typically what you think is, hey, there's crumbling streets, there's crumbling buildings, all of this kind of stuff, right? But really what it is, it is a very specific definition within the Illinois state law that allows you to use these tools. In this case, we've used finding that there is a lack of streets that are adequate to support development. There is a farm road essentially, but nothing to the extent that would support residential development or commercial development or anything like that, right? There needs to be substantial upgrades in order for this area to be developed as well. So that's the finding that we use to qualify this area. I can talk a little bit during the TIF public hearing about what findings we use to qualify. So that's all I've got. Thank you for having me.
Does anybody have any public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This road that he's talking about.
Please stand up here and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Beekler, I'm St. Clair Township resident, and that road that goes through, you were referring to, is our access road off Winslow, East Winslow Road, all the way up to Hyden Lane and out. That's the only other way off Winslow Road we have a shutdown, where we can't get down the hill. That's the only other access road coming out of there. I've been fighting for 20 years to keep that road open. So we have, I fought with Keller, and I finally got the sheriff on him, and it's clear that it is a legal road. We're through that property. My neighbor also has an access road to his property off of that road, so he has to have access to his property also. Well, I'm just trying to make sure we can get some kind of way to keep that road accessible so we can get out there if we have to. We've had several trees, we live on Winslow Road, if you know Winslow Road at all, there's trees along there. It takes out power lines at least three times a year, not all more. So we need another access road out of there. That's been our only other alternate route. It's been well-used, because I've been working on it and keeping it, maintaining, putting rock on it, keeping it usable, that we can go there to get out of there. I just want to know if their plans are included, any kind of access to that road so we can still have access to it in their future plans? That was my main concern. Is this property going to belong to Keller after this is all decided done? I don't know, is Keller still going to own this property?
Yeah, so the question is, will Craig and Forrest, will they still own the property during the development? The plan is yes, unless they convey it to maybe a home builder or something like that, then in that case, it's going to be owned by whoever the home builder is, but more than likely, yes.
He's going to find my house and put me his IQ yesterday, because I've got a little problem with this man.
Yeah.
But I just want to see if he's going to have future say in this land, or what's going on.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any public comment about the Business District?
Thank you. I'm Tony with St. Clair County Transit. This is Ken Turkey with the director of St. Clair County Transit. As you are aware, we were building bike trails throughout the area and don't want to take the harm, I think we do a great job maintaining them, we put a lot of heart to it. But with that said, and adjacent to this development, we have, and I brought this board, I'm going to leave it with them, but we recently completed Liberty Heights Trail up in, which is adjacent to Union Hill. And as you see this dash line here, we're currently under design with that as well. Frank Scott Parkway here, and Sullivan Union Hill is here, here is your development. Our goal is to see if we can work with the village and the developer to include property in order for us to have the area to build the trail instead of coming back later, and maybe the developer might give us the property, provide an easement, and even build it as part of the project. And then we will take it over and maintain it. It's all, it's all part of our infrastructure, and before, as for simple words, the egg is cracked and fried and ready to eat, we'd like to maybe be a part of that recipe in order to finish that meal. And by doing that, this would be great to allow us to have that right of way to connect that bike trail, because we have connections to various sections of the bike trail along the metro link, and also sections to allow you to bike into your own village here as well. And by doing that, it's going to allow us to add to our infrastructure, add to our collection system, and as we've always said, we don't want mile trails within the communities, we're trying to connect our communities so people can bike from one to the next without being on major roads. I appreciate you all letting me get my two cents here, and Ken and I work very hard, and if there's any questions, we're always available for your call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment for the Business District? Okay, with that, I will make a motion, we adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll close at 5:44. So, we have a minute.
Yeah, how come the two retired guys are waiting?
There was no traffic.
I can grimly have my dad, I have my dad for 3:30.
Thank you.
I'll let it pass.
You doing okay? How about you?
Yes, sir.
I look forward to that. I love getting on my bike and going.
I know.
Good to see you.
You too.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Ken Turkey.
Natalie Jablaski.
I am. No, we do know each other really well. It's a very common name.
Really?
It is, especially in this area, yeah.
When do you plan on making that phone call?
We worked at the hospital in our previous careers together at the same time, and we would get it.
Okay, it's 5:45.
Nice to meet you.
I think I'm only, 8:40, I'm only going to be there maybe an hour.
5:45, we're going to open up Community and Economic Development. This is the public hearing regarding the tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project for the proposed Triple Lakes TIF.
Thank you chairman Lanner. I will essentially keep this same spiel for Business District. It is related to the same piece of property. This is in an effort to help provide infrastructure and incentive for the developer for the proposed Triple Lakes development here in the northwest corner of the village. This property is currently unincorporated St. Clair County. As I said last meeting, if you look within our boundaries, there are not many real significant opportunities for future growth, particularly for significant retail and commercial growth and opportunity. The value of the village sees in this development is of course, one, a population growth, which has its own benefits for our current residents, but also providing commercial and retail sales tax, which helps us continue to provide excellent services without large property tax growth into the future, now and hopefully far into the future, as well as amenities that we can provide for our residents. We've worked really hard to work with our school districts, we are trying to craft this in a way that can help benefit them, just as it does the village, and look forward to continuing that conversation with those partners. With that, I would turn it back over to our economic developing consultant, Adam Stroud at PGAV, who's been working with us on this project for a couple of years now.
Hello again, 15 minutes later.
We got the letter that the meeting was at 5:45, so anything that you had prior to that, I appreciate you letting us know.
That's a great point, thank you. Thank you for speaking up. So the Business District has to do with sales taxes, the TIF District has to do with property taxes. So the value of all of the land, which is currently farmland, that will be frozen at that value for all of the taxing bodies, so the taxing bodies that overlap at currently the school, fire, soon-to-be village, they'll continue to generate that that tax revenue just on the farmland value. As things are built on it over a long period of time, those taxes will be collected, but they'll be put into a central pot of money. Some of that will go back to paying the village for the sewer investment that will be made out there, right? And after that is done, then the money will flow to the developer to reimburse them for their infrastructure costs that they incur, and then part of it will flow to the taxing bodies as a way of helping them in the meantime. So TIFs last 23 years, that's a long time for anybody to go without revenue, and so it's the village's intent to not wait 23 years, right? And to start to distribute that revenue to the taxing bodies earlier than that to help mitigate the costs. So residential, commercial, residential brings new students to the schools, potentially, but probably, and so that's really what we're talking about when we're saying helping the taxing bodies before 23 years is finished. This is part of the public process for establishing the TIF, there's a public hearing, there's a joint review board that will be meeting, a joint review board is made up of all of the taxing bodies that will be impacted by the TIF district, okay? And then we would look to hopefully have approval by the village board sometime in January, right? I think January is our target date. January is when the Business District and the TIF could be approved, if you guys so wish. I don't have anything else, but thank you again.
Okay, we will open up for public comment, so anybody that would like to speak, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself and.
Quick question. Can we ask questions before we make comments? Because I don't want to make a comment without understanding what he said. Or do we, are we allowed to ask questions prior to commenting?
You can ask your question.
All right, so as far as it occurs right now, it's frozen at farmland value. As they build houses or apartments, then it becomes a full taxable at the rate of whatever's on that property. Is that correct?
That's right, yes.
And then the TIF lasts 23 years as far as general TIF thing, but they'll pay back as the, as it becomes, how are you going to determine when it will start being paid back?
Gotcha, okay. So the agreement that's been entered into between the village and the developer says that the developer will put in a bunch of sewer infrastructure, I'm paraphrasing, of course, they'll put in a bunch of sewer infrastructure. Once it's done to the necessary standards, the village will repay the developer for that sewer investment up to $3.3 million, okay? Then as things are built, all of the property tax revenue that's generated, as well as all of the Business District's sales tax revenue, all of that will go back to the village to pay down that $3.3 million sewer investment. Once that is completely paid for, the developer gets all of the Business District's sales tax that's been generated, and they get 70% of the property tax money that is generated for the full life of that TIF. Of course, they have to build something in order to get anything, right? If there's no property tax revenue being generated, if there's no sales tax being generated, it means that nothing's been built. So it's a performance-based incentive. You have to build something as the developer in order for there to be any revenue coming back to the developer as an incentive. So I said 70% and not 100%, it's that 30% of TIF revenue that is being held back for these payments to the other taxing bodies to kind of hold them over until the 23 years of the TIF is complete. Once 23 years has expired, the TIF can go away, and all of the property value that was created because of the TIF, because of the Business District, all of that is then taxed by the taxing bodies, just like it would be if there was no TIF. So that's, that's ultimately the goal of the TIF, is to see development and generate additional public revenue for the, all of the taxing bodies that overlap the area.
What's, are there specific boundaries to this TIF district, or?
Yes, we have any maps?
This won't show it.
You'll see the whole thing, right?
There, you can have mine. Generally speaking, it's the northwestern quadrant of the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and Union Hill Road, which I think if you continue south, it's Sulte, right? But we're talking about the northwest quadrant. It's about 200 and some odd acres, 300 acres?
300.
Something like that, it's all owned by Cali Farms.
And what are the plans as far as building? What are they going to build on this farmland?
So, right now, the plans are to put commercial closer to the intersection of Frank Scott and Union Hill Road.
Commercial, do you have anything particular in mind?
Could be retail, could be dining, could be convenience store, all of the above, really.
Okay, nothing particular at this point?
Nothing particular, right?
Okay, commercial and?
So then, further to the west on Frank Scott Parkway, we were at the intersection, now we're going west on Frank Scott Parkway, what's slated for development there is multifamily.
Multifamily?
Multifamily apartments, yes. Multi-stable.
Well, and Road?
Closer to, yeah, closer to the Well and Road, that's exactly right. Closer to the Well and Road. That all will have to be determined, they'll have to do whatever the county says they need to do, right? The answer's probably yes, right?
It's hard getting out there now.
Exactly, exactly. So traffic studies will have to be done, I mean, this is, this is not something where the shovel goes in the ground tomorrow, it's something that will have to be planned out, and they'll have to follow all of the county's regulations and so forth. Now, further back from that, because that, that's probably, I don't know, 50 acres, something like that, right? There's a lot of acreage that's further back away from both of those roads.
16 acres.
That's where you start to get into single-family. Single-family detached homes, whether it's 1,500 square foot home, or a large, you know, 4,000 square foot home, none of that has been determined yet, they'll build it out as the market dictates.
It'll all be surveyed then?
Everything will happen, yeah, everything that you would need to do will, will have to be done. So they'll have to follow the village's, you know, zoning guidelines, parking requirements, all of that kind of stuff.
Will any of this be lower-income housing?
No, I mean, that's, we haven't heard anything about that, absolutely not. No, it's, it's market rate rental, it's possible that some of the single-family could be rental as well, there's, there's plenty of like townhomes, villas, things going up in the Metro East area, particularly as larger homes are kind of, they're outpriced, and people just can't afford them. So we're seeing some new kind of types of housing that are being introduced into the Metro East area, but most of those single-family homes are probably going to be owner-occupied.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Do you want to make a comment?
So my name is Maria Malloy, I live on St. Sabre in Swansea. Just questions about it, would like to actually see like numbers written down, because it's hard to process all this this way. Concerns about if Swansea, if I understand it correctly, Swansea's kind of going to be fronting for the sewer development, then it will be a payback, and then also a payback then to the developer for anything that they've worked, that they've done. Right now, we're looking at increasing taxes on our property taxes, that you're looking at doing that. We're fronting money, how is that going to affect, you know, what we're doing with that? If we're paying more taxes, or if the developer defaults, we're left with that as a village. So just concerns about that stuff. Again, I'm not against this, I actually think it's a good thing to develop, but I get concerned when they're talking about raising our taxes, and then they're also talking about, you're going to be a tax increment finance district, and it gets a little muddy, and concerns about us putting money up front, and then if somehow the economy goes, or the developer goes, or whatever, then we're left, so just concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
How will that affect the highway off of Frank Scott Parkway? Will you be adding, will you be adding another lane or two, or?
We really can't answer that, it's going to be up to what the, the developer's going to have to hire an engineer to do a traffic study, and then they have to present that and get it approved by the county highway engineer, and, because it is a county highway. So we really don't have any say over what happens to Union Hill or Frank Scott, those are both county highways, so.
We'll be expressing our thoughts, obviously.
It's a very busy highway, it's my backyard, and before all the money goes into it, this is kind of going to be worked out, or that will come as they build, develop.
That will come as a, it's going to be, it has to be a county study.
Right.
And we really don't have any say on the road, but we can express our opinions and thoughts.
And they, if they want access off of those roads, they have to come to the county, and they have to, right, the county has to give them permission to do that, so that's going to be a requirement of the county is to have that study.
And I guess then that comes back to, we're putting money into something that we're not sure that they're going to get what they need to put in what they want.
Yeah.
So it just, that's, again, because.
Valid point.
But, I mean, the whole plan has to be approved before we do anything. So there's, there's much preliminary work and design work and engineering work that all has to be done, which, I mean, I, when we spoke to the developer last meeting, you know, he said he had probably close to a year's worth of work to get all that done. So, kind of as Adam said, this is nowhere near shovel-ready, as they say. I mean, this is going to be a lengthy process to get it approved.
It sounds like there's been a lot of forethought that has been going into it, and that's reassuring to hear, so.
Yeah, I mean, these guys have been working on it, and they've brought to the board several times, I mean, this has been a couple of years in the making so far, and we have at least that much more to still go.
You know, that's where you hand it, okay.
Can you say who the developer is?
Can we say who it is? Well, it's, the developer officially is Triple Lakes, and there's, I think there's three partners in that group, if I remember correctly, so I don't remember their names, but.
I mean, it's Craig, he's one of them, right? You're familiar with them. Forrest Lurch, who's done work in other communities, sorry, Forrest Lurch is another partner, he's done work in other communities, I think he's got commercial and residential properties in other communities in the Metro East area, Maryville, maybe Glen Carbon too, St. Collinsville. So that's, those are the folks we're talking about. But again, if they decide that home building is not their thing, then they could always convey that property on the back end to, I'm making this up, I shouldn't even say a brand name, and just imagine the home builders in the Metro East St. Louis area, right? They come in probably after the infrastructure's put in place, so it could be somebody else. That's, that's not guaranteed. Or it could just be Craig and Forrest the whole time.
This is a general question on definition. What is a TIF district, and why does that qualify as a TIF district?
Because I didn't get to the qualifications of the TIF, so thank you for bringing that up. Again, there's some things that just jump out at you as, yep, that's, that's blight, you know, deteriorated buildings, well, obviously, there's maybe a barn out there, and there's a little bit of a house, kind of a house, more of a shed. The way we qualify this is it's considered vacant land, and it's undermined, right? So if it's undermined. So if it's undermined, you don't have to have any other factors on your side. That, that's the only thing you need. Again, you look at it, you think, A, it's just farmland, but if you follow the state law, that is one of the factors that you can use to identify the area. So not all of them are intuitive like that. Um, not all of them, you can even see if you're just walking through the area, but that is one of the factors.
And so that said, who's going to mitigate the uh, undermining? Who's paying for that?
Yeah, the developer will have to pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah. If they want to build anything, if they want to get insurance for their buildings, all of those sorts of requirements, that's what they're going to have to do. The TIF is, the way the agreement is written, the TIF only pays for infrastructure and like the professional services associated with infrastructure. So the actual infrastructure, the concrete, right, sidewalks, but also the planning and the professional services that go into that. Uh, there's nothing in the agreement that pays for mine subsidence or anything like that or pouring concrete down into the ground to stabilize it. None of that is eligible.
And so prior to us doing any, as a village, doing any work on that, it will have to be, it'll be required to be stabilized?
Well, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's in the village code, but that's something that the developer and those eventual retailers and everything will, will want. I mean, Deerburgs is the kind of the poster child for mine subsidence and what can happen, right? If, if things go south, um, so they'll, they'll be protecting their own investment by making sure that it doesn't sink into the ground. But it's not something that they're going to get reimbursed with TIF money for. It is a TIF-eligible expense, but the agreement that's between the village and the developer does not, it doesn't say that TIF money can be used.
How is the property in this TIF area being, being acquired for the developers or?
So they own it right now. Yeah, all of the property on that map that's in yellow, they own all of that property currently, right? So they already have control of it. Yep.
You're not talking eminent domain on any of it or any?
No, no, no. Eminent domain can be used whether there's a TIF there, whether there's a business district there or not. I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm just saying that, that's a fact. Um, business district and TIF allows, makes it easier to do those things, but right now, there's nothing in the TIF plan, nothing in the business district plan that says the village intends to use that or displace homes or anything like that. That's a good question though. Any other public comment?
The 3.3 million that you've spoken of, is there interest that's paid by the developer back to us? Or is there, how does that, or is that, how does that 3.3 million work?
There is no interest paid on it. And the quicker it's paid back to the village, meaning the quicker the developer builds things that are taxable, the quicker the village gets paid back and then the quicker money will start flowing to the developer. So it's, it's to their advantage to build as much as possible as fast as possible. Obviously, they have to follow all the rules and everything, but they, it's to their advantage to do it. Yeah. And good question.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Real quick, um, I'm Matt Steins, I'm superintendent for District 110. You know, first I want to say that I appreciate Adam and Ben working with the school districts. I say Fairview Heights because uh, and you guys are Swansea, but a lot of the district, the 300 acres lies in my school district. So um, when we talk single family homes according to the map, that would hopefully impact me down the road. I hope this certainly all gets built. Um, I would tell you the school districts appreciate that you guys came to the table on the forefront, knowing that there's an impact on kids. I just want to remind you and stress the importance of that. If you're watching the, the news, you know the federal dollars are dwindling where education is concerned. If you know anything about school finance, you know that our state only contributes about 30%. And when you do the math, that means we're heavily reliant on local property tax dollars within the state of Illinois. It's, it's 60% of our revenue. So anytime we get new buildings, anytime we get new infrastructure and it comes with kids, that's a hard cost for us. And I appreciate that there's an agreement that works and I want to thank you for that and we look forward to working with you to get something settled.
Okay, thank you.
Would that just affect, hi, Matt?
Hi, how are you?
Okay. Would that just affect um, the Fairview Heights School or what happened Shiloh? What do we talk?
So where the, where the lines cross, I'm sorry. Where the school district lines cross, you've got Bubba 118 and you've got Grant District 110 and then 201 encompasses all of them.
118 is half their team?
Yeah, so if you were to take the western route, when you turn onto Frank Scott Parkway from Union Hill, Grant has the corner, White House on the corner. And then when you head west, that is Grant District 110 till you get to about Blue Island Drive. And then my district takes kind of a jagged cut towards the bottom of 161. So we've got the Highwood neighborhood, but if you cut through there, everything on the right is mine. Everything on the left is Bubba 118.
School districts are cut.
Yeah, we are. Weird ones.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will close at 6:10. Alright.
Thank you.
Where were your principal at?